Welcome, everyone, to the Norton Planning Board's meeting of Tuesday, October 19th. Again, this is a hybrid remote and in-person meeting. If you care to join us in person, we are at the Norton Public Library, 68 East Main Street. Or if you'd like to join remotely via video, you can please join using the Zoom link available on the meeting agenda, or via the Zoom app using meeting ID 638-929-1060. There is also a dial-in number available on the meeting agenda, should you choose. This is also being called to view this meeting on Norton Cable, Channel Access 15. In addition, feel free to email questions to the board ahead of the meeting, or even during the meeting, to Paul Dizepi, our town planner, whose email address is listed on the agenda for this meeting. And just to do some wording here, this is all pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021. Again, as I've said, this meeting is being conducted in person and as a courtesy via remote means in accordance with applicable law. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and our participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public and board members, the meeting here will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast, unless required by law. So with all that out of the way, we'll get started with Planning Board business and policies. We do have a little bit of planning board business to discuss, but we'll save that for the end of the meeting, if that makes sense for everybody. Bills and warrants, I don't think we have any additional ones of those to review at this time. We do have one set of minutes from our last meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review the meeting minutes from October the 5th? And if they do, do you have any edits that have not been provided to Paul or Brian previously? I know, Brian, I gave you one quick note, but that's just a typo check. But anything else? If people do not feel they've had sufficient time to review the minutes, please let me know, and we can move to approve these at a later date.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Julie, for the motion, and Scott for the second. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve the minutes from October the 5th? Okay. Hearing none. I'll go through the roll, starting in person and finishing remotely. Wayne?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So approve the minutes from October the 5th. And we'll move on to public hearings for the meeting. We're going to go a little bit out of order here, given some of the discussions that have been happening. So we're going to start with special permits 11449, 1144450, and 11451, which relate to Blue Star Business Park Phase 2. Due to some of the peer review comments, the applicant has requested a continuance to our November the 9th meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion on the motion to move the Blue Star to November the 9th? Okay. Start with the, who was the motion in the second?
I was the motion.
In the second?
You beat me by a second.
Okay. Julie and Scott. Okay. So we'll go to the roll. Wayne?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So moving those to November the 9th. And we'll keep on. Again, there are continued updates on that project in the permit eyes and Dropbox. So again, when we come back on the 9th, we want to make sure, if you have any questions that we want to ask in advance, please send them through Paul. Next item on the agenda is special permit 11852, which is 186 South Washington Street, which is an application to modify an existing site plan submitted by industrial property leases in Weston. And we have applicant Jose Pachardo, which is who's here with us in person. So thank you, Jose. If you want to please just, we do have files here in front of us in the computer, but if you want to give an overview of the project to the members of the board, and we'll go from there. Paul does have the site plan up on the screen as well for everybody, virtually.
Okay, thank you. Jose Pachardo, project manager with Green Seal Environmental, here representing the applicant for the minor modification of an existing site plan that was approved on August 2020. What we're looking to do here is, to the left of the PDF, you have the existing gravelly area, gravelly jar, and the blue represents the existing detention point. What we are looking to do is to pave that entire area. In order to do that, we're going to have to modify the drainage system, and we will be providing deep-sown cache basins, offline oil and grit separator tanks, and ultimately we will be being infiltrated to an oversized underground filtration system, which it is designed to hold and infiltrate the 100-year storm. It is important to note here that we will not be creating any additional clearance. All the project is within the already approved limits of disturbance, and we are going to fully honor the buffer zones, vegetative buffers, and natural area that we agreed on the original submitted. This project has been assigned to a third-party peer review engineer, which will be all of our calculations and validator with very minor conceptual comments. The revised plans, we included everything that was changed on it, as printed in red, as you can easily identify. And the only substantial change to the plan is that we are going to be providing additional sedimentation facing along the property line. There is an existing sedimentation sink facing here, already in place. So we're going to repair the areas that need and install that along the property line. And that is about it. With that, I would like to open for any questions that you really have.
Sure. Just to refresh everyone's memory, the site is used for?
It's a maintenance garage, the building, which we will not propose any changes in the use. And those are going to be maintained exactly the way it was approved. And they have a gravel jar that they park their trucks at the end of the collection process, and they also have storage containers on that gravel jar.
I would say, and the project is built already, correct?
That is correct. This is the actual conditions over here to the side, as it was approved. To the left is what we have proposed. So it is, and it's fully operational right now.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Pachardo here? We do have the peer reviewer here as well.
Tim, I have one.
Sure.
So Jose, there's not going to be any increase in traffic, or the number of trucks or containers that are stored there? It's going to keep the existing use? It's simply just paving the gravel lot?
And the detention area.
And the detention pond, yes, yes.
To the best of my knowledge, that is correct.
Okay.
Any further questions for Jose here? Is there anything, or we'd like to, and we have the comments from Emery in our folders as well, but any further, we can ask them to come up and know if we have anything further? Does that work?
It sounds like a plan.
Okay. Mr. Brennan, you are here. You are currently muted, but if you would like to just give your comments as the peer review on the review of the stormwater and the other changes you mentioned.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pat Brennan, the arrangement director. I'd sent you the letter back on October 5th, and it had six comments. Five of them were really informational, and they relate to how the project complies with your Norton Stormwater bylaw. And I'll just run through them really quick for your information. The first comment, basically, I just wanted to note that the proposed drainage system is capable of infiltrating all runoff from the area for storms up to 100-year event. So there'd be no, absolutely no increase in runoff on site. The second has to do with the treatment of the stormwater. And based on your bylaw, because they are retaining the first inch of runoff from all previous surfaces on site, they placed about 5,400 cubic feet of runoff. Storage volume in their proposed infiltration system is over 17,000 cubic feet, so they comply with that bylaw, just based on the storage capacity of that system alone. But as I mentioned, it's capable of infiltrating all runoff, the pretty storm up to 100-year. For instance, during the 100-year storm, it infiltrates almost 30,000 cubic feet of runoff. The only comment that I had made that they actually responded to, or needed to respond to, is my third one, which related to erosion controls along the property line adjacent to the existing basin that they have there. I just wanted to add some erosion controls along that area, because that was the only area that really runoff could, or cement could escape the site. On the revised plans, it included, dated September 29th, they showed, they not only showed the erosion control area, but they said that they've actually been installed. I haven't been able to second confirm that, but they are showing the plans, and they do say installed. My next comment, basically, just said that with that additional settlement control, they are in compliance with your stormwater bylaw as it relates to erosion controls. My next comment is in relation to their long-term provision convention, an operation management plan for stormwater system, and they're in compliance with the bylaw with that plan as well. And as I mentioned, post-remnant stormwater runoff from the site would progress in the system, but also not discharged to the Norton stormwater system, therefore, it's in compliance with the Massachusetts MS4 general permit for the town of Oregon. So they're in compliance with all the local bylaws as it relates to the drainage, stormwater, erosion controls. So they addressed my comments, but there really wasn't many comments. They did a good job with the design, with the redesign of the site, and they're in full compliance with your local bylaws.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. Any members of the board have questions for the peer reviewer here? And again, this is all in delay that we have online from October the 6th, which you mentioned. So thank you again for that. Steve and Kevin, I'll make sure that I give you both an opportunity to ask questions, be it the peer reviewer or the applicant here, since I can't read your body language in person here.
No, I'm over the digging floor.
Yep, I'm going to, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. If there's no further questions, if the applicant or the peer reviewer are looking for, I don't believe we're waiting on anything else regarding this project, correct, Paul?
No, the, Jose and Pat worked very closely and resolved those issues very quickly.
Okay.
And we didn't see any other issues on our end, since this was primarily a drainage issue.
Okay. Does anybody like to make a motion?
Is it just, is it a special permit, or is it a site plan? Just modified site plan?
Yes, it's a modification to the original site plan.
Okay. I'll move to approve the modification of the original site plan for SPR 11852.
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Julie, for the motion, and Alan for the second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Okay. Hearing none. I will go through the roll. Wayne?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So modification of the site plan has been approved. Paul, do we have bylaws or anything to sign, or is this through a decision?
This would just be a decision.
Okay.
Which I'll get out to tomorrow.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is another continuance for Zero Rear Eddy Street. I know we do have the applicant here on the Zoom call, correct?
I do see him, and I see, I see the engineer.
So I'm not sure which of you would like to take the lead here, but I'll defer whichever one of you would like to kind of give us an update of what's going on at this time. So now we've been with conservation, so.
Yeah, Craig Zginowski, Rim Engineering, and Sam Wydeck, the owner of the property. So last night, they went back before conservation. There are still some minor issues as far as actual conservation. But the major issue that's being worked on is that it's been, the drainage system's been reviewed by John Chessia. We brought in Margaret Bacon, Different Engineering Company. She's been working on the plans, and she's had reviews with John Chessia. She made his modifications, and he has more changes. So at this stage, the drainage system, although it's been increased from the original design, additionally infiltration trenches have been added, but that still is not completely worked out. And as I said, conservation still has one or two minor, semi-minor issues that we can address, changes to the plans that they asked for. So I know Mr. Wydeck has mentioned to me that although those things are important to the design of the plan, we are also asked the special permit addresses the allowance of the common driveway, as well as the allowance of duplex buildings within the Wetlands Resource District. Wondering if those issues can be addressed and approved, as we still need to finalize So in other words, the use of the duplex buildings and the common driveway.
Understood. Paul, this special permit, this requires a site plan, correct, or does it not?
No, I believe this is just a special permit, right? Because it's just for duplex units.
So it's just the driveway, the duplexes, and the development in the Wetlands Protection District? So it does not require a site plan?
Correct.
Okay. And I guess at this point, what is your timeline for next action with conservation, to the best of your knowledge?
Well, the work on it is soon is, unfortunately, Margaret, the engineer, has some health issues, and it's being brought back to us to take it up with Mr. Chessia. So I would hope within the next couple of weeks, we can modify what he's asking for. But we would still have to go back before conservation. I would not anticipate being back before, and I know they meet every two weeks. I'm not sure with the holiday coming, or what their schedule is. I wouldn't think we would, unless it's end of November, I wouldn't think we'd be before then, before then.
Understood. Okay. I think, to that case, I think that, given, I think, given that this has been continued a number of times since, over the last kind of, let's see, what is it? 15 months or so? I think in terms, I don't know, I think that, speaking for myself, I guess personally, I don't think I would be prepared to rule on the project at this point, to kind of reset in terms of where we are and what we're looking at, because it's been so long since we could have had those initial overviews and running everything through here. Do any other members of the board have any comments they'd like to make at this time?
Well, I think point of information on my end is with Scott's departure, what does that do to the special permit? Because I think at that point, we don't have enough to approve it, even if we all said yes.
Oh, and that was a risk that we brought to the applicant back in April, when the two new members came onboard, that you were now limited to five people voting. So Julie, that's a great point, because with Scott leaving, you will now only have four eligible voters on this, which would not give you enough to vote to support the special permit, if you were to wait beyond tonight.
Right.
Okay.
Another point of maybe information or order, is it one special permit for all three of those elements, Paul? Because it only has one number.
Well, that's, we can do that. You would still have to vote on those three items separately, but it would be one decision under that one number.
But even if we voted, we still can't get through all, well, for me personally, I would never vote at a minimum on the Wetlands one until conservation is done. So even, let's say we took up the duplex and the common drive today, and those two passed, they're still not going to get the third one, because Scott will be gone. So it's, unfortunately, I feel at this point, we might be at a reset, and I don't know how easy or difficult that is, but without Scott, or all of us feeling comfortable enough to push all three forward at once, we can't get to the ultimate goal of the applicant of approving the special permit for all three of those elements.
All right. What's the process requirement to rebuild a votable quorum? Would it be just revisiting all the material for all board members? The applicant would need to withdraw the amendment, resubmit it.
Okay.
And then with the new board, that would certainly allow Alan and Wayne, and if they waited until the new person is onboard, then you would be up to seven eligible voters. Does that also reset for the conservation? Or are they exclusive? They don't ride on the same number, do they? They're, no, they don't. No, it's a notice of intent. Yeah, I don't know what their quorum is, if they even have a quorum issued. So if Conservation Commission would stay as scheduled and processed?
Nothing would change.
Yeah, it would just be a reset on the planning board side to rebuild the quorum, if the applicant chose to withdraw and resubmit. Correct.
Okay. Yeah. Each board grants relief independently of the others, as needed. Okay. So in terms of, I think that some of the members of the board have kind of shared their threats. Sam, or, I apologize, I've forgotten your first name.
Greg.
Greg, I apologize. Given what you've heard in terms of this board's ability to reach a quorum on the special permit, do you have a preferred path you would like us to take at this point? Because I think that, in general, I think there, our feeling would be that it might be cleaner and more advantageous to you to withdraw and resubmit, so that you would have the ability of the full board to vote on the project. Yep, we're here.
Yes, hi, Sam Wydeck. The only question I have is, I have to resubmit, that's new fees that I have to file, and I don't think I can have a fee later from you, because now you have to send out the abouters list, and, you know, be noticed in the paper all over again, correct?
Correct.
So if, is there any way, and I know, so we can't make any decision, but we?
Seth, could you repeat that? We broke up, please.
So all three have to be made for the decision, whereas if you approved the special permit and approved the common driveway, then I guess I could refile, and it would be under the Wetlands section of it?
It would still be a special permit, so the same requirements would still apply.
I think he's asking, can we separate the three? At this stage, are we not allowed to?
I mean, the board can grant any relief that it chooses, so it's not necessarily, but again, you'd have to, you'd be, that wouldn't change the noticing requirements or anything else. It would just be splitting everything up, and you'd have multiple decisions, coming from multiple different times with multiple different board, with different makeups of the board.
And is there a path where, if that did go that route, could you end up in a scenario where the third one would require maybe changes that would then require modifications to the original two?
Because it doesn't require a site plan, I think that would be, I don't think that would be something that would, because generally, when we're looking at changes, that generally carries over to the site plan. These are conditional approvals for the common driveway and the duplexes. If we were to separate that out, the driveway is the only one that could move.
Potentially.
The duplexes would be, it's allowing the use of duplexes in that area. So it's not the site plan of the duplexes.
But you were given a plan showing the potential locations of the duplexes.
Yes.
It's possible the work coming out of Conservation Commission could move the units as well. But you're right, ultimately, it still could be duplex is allowed, it might just not be where they're currently proposed.
Correct. So Sam, obviously, the decision will be up to you and Greg, in terms of whether you would like to withdraw or not. You don't need to make that decision at this moment in time. But obviously, if we go past tonight, then we will not have the ability to have a quorum on the project. So how you want to do that is kind of up to you. If you would like us to proceed and vote, we can do that. But obviously, you've heard that some of the members do have reservations about approving the Wetlands special, the wet development in the Wetland Protection District, without having kind of, having everything gone through conservation.
Mr. Chairman, if it goes to a vote and it doesn't pass, then is there a waiting period for the applicant to reapply after that?
There is. It's either a year or two.
Okay. I think that's important for the applicant to be aware of as well.
Thank you, Kevin. And we're kind of getting into the weeds in procedure here. Does anybody have any specific questions about kind of what the procedure would be on the board's end here? Or are we kind of, feel like we've covered those bases?
Well, has there been any additional information that we've received tonight? You folks are in the room, that we haven't received prior. I know it's been on our agenda, I think, 22 times. In addition to the applicant being present, is there any additional information tonight that would warrant us to take a vote?
There were some. There were some pages added on the 30th of November, or October, or 30th of September. Not going backward, not going in time machine today.
Revised plans as far as?
Revised, yeah.
Yeah, as far as I could revise them until Mr. Chesier approves the final drainage. So really, the only changes were the drainage.
So there were some drainage changes, but again, the plans that we have are not the, kind of the final drainage plans. But because it is not a site plan, or a site plan project, that is something that we would just have to weigh appropriately.
And Mr. Chesier has not reviewed it yet, based on comments early that he's developed, that's correct?
He has reviewed it, and changes were made, and he's re-reviewed it and still has more changes.
Okay, thank you.
Having worked with Mr. Chesier before, he is thorough. Yes, he is.
Yeah, the majority of his changes earlier do with the one blocks from order. It doesn't have to do with, you know, petbacks or anything like that, because we're not really only in the Rockford District or drift with one lot entrance. So it's all about grading and structure and EDP estimation. But I do not foresee, you know, manipulation of where I was looking duplexes. I look on the plan that you've got.
Okay. Now, I know that there's been some discussion from the Conservation Commission about the status of the body of water next to the property. Greg, do you want, is it, there was some discussion about whether it might be, that might actually be a river? Is that what the discussion?
A river runs through it, and the bylaw states when a river enters a pond, it's no longer a river. But if it's a river, the setback becomes 200 feet instead of 100 feet. So there is a neighbor who brought in people to dispute the fact that, well, what we're calling a pond, our wetlands people are calling a pond. I don't know the status of that. Did Sam, did anything happen with that last night? I wasn't able to attend the conservation.
Correct, yeah, we brought up our, you know, that, which was all the other notice of intents regarding areas associated with Meadowbrook Pond. The adjacent properties on the other side of the shore. And kind of really got walked over, because they aren't have everything finalized with Mr. Chesier trying to, I don't know, collective discussion about what it was. They asked for additional information, additional, you know, aerial topography. But we did show them, you know, patients signing off a number versus a, and, you know, on the adjacent property with that body of water. But we feel like that's our, you know, and then, but there was no definitive answer.
Right, so I know you broke up quite a bit, but conservation in the past has seen it as a pond. Now they're trying to see it as a river, so you can't have it both ways. It's either a pond or a river, and they'd improve other properties adjacent to the same pond as a pond. We should have the same definition.
Okay.
But obviously, that's a point that needs to be worked out with them as well.
I, yes. But that would be one thing that would quote unquote, drive a change to the site plan.
Correct.
Were to, were to go in the other direction.
Yeah, if it went the other way, then that would change drastically what we could do.
Okay. Okay.
So you're saying that if you took a vote tonight and denied it, we'd have to wait one to two years, possibly two years to refile? So I'll say appeals about that.
Why don't I, I'll run through, we have a list of notes that we've kept here in terms of issues and questions regarding the project. So I'll run through those. Paul, I'm sure if you want to pull that up on the screen here. It is listed in the, I'm sorry, I can't find the folder. There we go, so.
And you can share yours if you want.
Yeah, if you're already doing it, then I won't bother and mess myself up here. So the first question was about what special permits were needed, and that has been addressed. Stormwater, we've worked on. One of the questions was the fire department required an all-weather driving surface and gravel had been proposed.
An update to that is Mr. Chesier has required a pavement, so we've moved to pavement.
Well, I'll cross that one off of the metaphorical list then. The 100-year, there was a question about flooding and wetlands. And the note here was that the flood plain is, the 100-year flood plain is within the pond and/or river. And since nothing's going in that area, we don't need to address that. There was a question about documentation on road maintenance. And potential condition being that there would be a covenant made between the landowners or residents. Things are obviously in motion with Conservation Commission. The, just kind of running through this here, again, some of these conditions go back to our initial meetings in July of 2020. Everything's with conservation. There was a potential discussion about a homeowners association or something like that, which I think ties back to our, the previous point. There's one permit application for all three permits. Peer review is in motion for conservation. There was a question, concern about the potential length of the driveway in terms of snow plowing and things like that. That would be something that would potentially likely be handled through any kind of a covenant between the property owners. There was a question whether the duplex would be rentals or ownership, or owner occupied. I'm not sure if we could really put any restrictions on that, because an owner could always rent it out independently. The, there was a question about lighting on the road. I'm not sure if there is lighting shown on the site.
Well, it has been added.
Lighting has been.
With the electrical utility poles and streetlights.
Okay. Do, and there's a question about some of the, whether some of these are something for the planning board to deal with or just for the potential property owners to deal with. And there was a question about, and I think that is it in terms of the issue conditions. As we've dealt with this project over the past several months, as much as it's been a little bit broken up, are there any additional questions or comments about the project that we have at this time? Obviously, I guess this applies only to the five members who would vote on the project. So Wayne and Alan, you're off the hook for that question.
I get it, yes, Mr. Chairman, I do. And I'm looking at all of the minutes from the dates when this was continued. And I think the only date that I could find through the minutes when we had a presentation was July 28th of 2020. And I haven't gotten through all of them yet, so I don't know if we had any updates provided since then. But I do know that on July 28th, I was absent from the meeting. And honestly, since we haven't talked about this item for a long time, I don't know if I ever watched the replay of that meeting or if I ever signed the absent affidavit for the legal requirement to vote.
Okay. Yeah, that would be something that we would need to confirm. I forget what the name of the act is. The Mullen Rule, thank you, Paul. I'm not sure if that is something that we would have on file. But I'll give Paul a little bit to check on that. Thank you for bringing it up. We do have a number of.
And I'll go back and watch the video, obviously, and then, you know, sign it if I didn't already. But I certainly can't vote, like.
You did, Kevin.
I did?
Yes, sir. January 5th would be the other touch point.
Yes, and the other date where we have a number of comments is from January the 5th.
Okay, good. And I, so I signed the one from the July 28th meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
We have, we have it in virtual copy.
Perfect, excellent, thank you.
So another hurdle out of the way here. Again, what, Paul, if you could just pull up the site plan again, just on the meeting for everybody to review again. I think most of us have our devices in front of us, but just in case anybody is looking at the project virtually here and wants to kind of understand what we're talking about, since we're talking about a lot of things, but not necessarily going through the actual plans themselves, thank you. And in terms of the the site plan itself, showing the duplexes, do we have that one available? In terms of, just to look at the site plan, even though it's.
Sheet five, I believe, Paul.
Okay. So again, there would be common driveway coming off of River Eddie Street coming in, and you see the four duplexes highlighted, or not in a sense highlighted, but shown on the map. And then Meadowbrook, Meadowbrook Pond, as it's labeled on the map, shown below there. Okay. So in terms of questions from members of the board, do we have any additional questions this time? I know we do have potentially some other people on the, on the meeting who want to speak to this.
Scott, go ahead. I was going to just say for completeness of the public record, I know it was touched on, but I don't know if it's clear that, you know, due to some private reasons, my residency will be changing at the end of this month, which will no longer permit me to stay as a member of the board. So I've submitted my resignation effective at the close of this meeting. So I think, you know, in this discussion here, there's some challenges, right? I think we have five members of the board, including myself, that have been fully read in on this plan. Which would then, in order to pass the special permit, would require five of five, right? I also know there are some other challenges with that kind of the completeness of where it is to vote on the three pieces. So I think if we think in terms of like, what's best to comply to the bylaws and what's in effect for representing the town of Norton, but also for the applicant. You know, if, I think maybe, in my opinion, it's a strong recommendation that to fully read in a larger board would not only give the ability for everyone to get better up to speed, understand the context of it, have the residents and the butters then revisit the plan and share their feedback, but also a higher likelihood of getting, instead of 100% five-for-five vote tonight, may make it more, you know, suitable to get to a five out of a seven, or five out of a six. So I think there's two edges here that are in favor for, you know, maybe revisiting this and withdrawing and resubmitting at a later date that is both in favor for the town as well as the applicant. So, you know, because I kind of induced this challenge for both sides of the table here, I thought it was effective to really share it, you know? You know, by no means my intent, personal reasons have kind of landed where they are, so it kind of sets us in motion where we are. I think if we didn't have kind of the battery of continuous continuances, we wouldn't be up against this challenge, but unfortunately, that's where we are. So, you know, I'd like to kind of just say that before we expand, you know, comments to anyone else that is, you know, on the meeting tonight. But, you know, that's kind of my recommendation, and I think it really fits the intent and interests of both parties.
I would say that I agree with that, but my client needs to chime in as well.
Sure, sure.
Thank you, Scott. Ultimately, it's the applicant's decision.
No, I just, I wanted to say, because I know some people are kind of wondering why we're in this predicament, and it should be at least out there. I know we were kind of saving it for the end, but I think it's important to at least tie it to this record, so.
Thank you, Scott.
Yeah, thanks, Jim.
Any members of the board have any specific questions or comments they'd like to make at this time? Or otherwise, I'll open it up for anyone else on the meeting who would like to speak in relation to the project.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Attorney Hickson, if you would like to speak here, and again, just state your name and what you're representing for the record.
Yeah, thank you Chairman, members of the board. I don't want to make this issue any trickier than it already is, but I felt like it was necessary that I speak on behalf of our client. My name is Attorney Dylan Hickson, and I'm a lawyer at the law offices of Gay &amp; Gay in Holland, Massachusetts. Our office represents Debra White. I'm here actually in the stead of my brother, Attorney Matt Costa. I believe that he has been dealing with this issue on behalf of our client for quite some time. However, unfortunately, he could not make it to 9:00. He asked that I step in to voice our client's concerns. I am familiar with the issue, and he just wanted me to bring up a few things, which we believe we've addressed before. I have in front of me a correspondence that was sent by my brother, Attorney Costa, on February 23rd of earlier this year, outlining some specific reasons why we are opposed to the application for this special permit. Mainly, the primary one being is that none of the proposed lots that have been identified here with regards to this special permit have legally valid frontage on Tonkin Avenue as required by the town zoning bylaw and Planning Board's subdivision rules and regulations. I believe a few months ago, I don't know the exact date, that this particular issue was addressed to the board by my brother, Attorney Matt Costa. I don't have the exact date, but I believe it was a few months ago, as I was also at that meeting. But I can go into a bit of the details as to the exact reasons for our opposition in this particular matter. As I said before, none of the lots have legally valid frontage, at least as they're defined by the legal standard under Massachusetts case law on Route 140 or otherwise called Tonkin Avenue. Particularly, all lots must have frontage and must have access to a lot from the street. And specifically, where a distinct physical impediment prevents access to a lot from a, or onto the broader public way, those lots cannot be said to have frontage. For one reason or another, none of the lots here, lots one through four, have that necessary access to a public way. And access is actually blocked for a number of reasons, particularly by Meadowbrook Pond and additionally, a continuous guard rail that is on Route 140. And then as to lot 140, I'm sorry, as to lot four, it is, frontage is blocked by the industrial zoning district. And so for these particular reasons, I just wanted to, I know this issue's kind of already become tricky and it may not even be voted on tonight, but just on behalf of our client, we wanted to raise this issue. And then additionally, my brother, Attorney Costa, wanted me to bring forth is that this application has been continued for quite some time now. And my client has been diligent about asking my brother and I to be at these meetings and to state her opposition for what we believe is a legally valid reason. And because of these long continuances, her legal bills have become, in her opinion at least, excessive. And it's a valid concern, so we just wanted to raise that additional kind of secondary concern, is that this matter has been on the docket and on the agenda for quite some time, and continuance after continuance has been granted. And it just seems like, again, this matter isn't going to be resolved. And just on the behalf of our clients, you know, financial interest, we just wanted to make that apparent to the board as well. But again, that's pretty much it. I believe you all have a copy of the correspondence that was sent by Attorney Costa on February 23rd. I would ask that before any vote is taken, that that correspondence, again, at least be reviewed partially. We believe that it states a valid concern that needs to be addressed.
Thank you, Attorney Hickson. We do have that letter available in front of us.
Right.
In front of us virtually. So thank you again for your time and your discussion tonight.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussions from, questions from? Is there any further discussions from, questions from members of the board in relation to those comments or in relation to the project as a whole? Okay. Mr. White, I'll, I'll go to you. Is there anything further you'd like to say in terms of this project, in terms of the path you'd like to take us, take, to have us move forward here, one way or another?
Um, regards to the commentary of the attorney, legal fees are for the individual that wants the place, something just like that was being burned in my home is being for keeping this property for past thirty-plus years. So with that being said, you know, we're doing everything within our right as property just, we're trying to work with the town and the butters as well. Also, there's been numerous common driveways that have pulled frontage through, vernaculars, wetlands, and guardrails, actually 140 on the other side of the railroad track that have already been approved in the town of Norton, fully indicating that the bylaw or the use of the common driveway. I have an attorney on board to add to get involved, but at this time, it's just, you know, we could protect the access each lot through the frontage we're pulling off of 140. And just meander along the, it would just be a, you know, great change. So with that being, I think you guys are trying to, is there any way that I could present a waiver relief on resubmission that, that's the avenue that everybody on the board?
That is a question I've not had to address in my time, in my time on the board here. Paul, are you aware of any circumstances where that has been granted or what the process would be for that?
Oh, wait, yeah, I don't know.
Okay. Yeah, so Sam, the short answer is that we would have to review that. It's not something that we would be able to grant right now, because it's not something that I even know how we go about applying for that or asking for that internally within the town, or who needs to do it, or who they need to ask. So I apologize that we're, we're asking you to make that decision without us having an answer for you on that point.
Any ways that we, that we can maybe assess something? You know, you don't really, anyway, because then the board member will go on, because if, I guess at this point, to make everybody's life easier, and I appreciate the time and the duration that everybody on the board has made for this project, I guess at this time we'll have to refile?
So, so you're, so just to say you're with, you're going to be withdrawing the application and refiling, correct?
Yes, but that is without prejudice.
Just fine, it means they can, they can immediately turn it back.
Yeah, understood.
And that's without both parties?
Yes, yes, I think, I mean, I'm in favor that I think we would probably need to vote to accept it, is that correct?
Yes.
So we would need to vote to accept that as the board? And I believe that would be a motion only taken by the five members who could vote on the project?
Correct.
Thank you, Steve, for the motion, and Julie for the second. Again, is there any further discussion to vote to allow the applicant to withdraw the application without prejudice to resubmit? And Sam, again, I will just say to you, just to make sure that, I'm sure you'll communicate with Paul appropriately, but as we bring a seventh member onto the board following this meeting, obviously, the filing timeline will make, will be something that you watch with that. Any further discussion on the motion from members of the board?
Can I just get a roll call on, on the approval of the without prejudice bill?
There will be a roll call, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any further discussion on the motion from the five members of the board participating in this project? No? Okay, so we'll go through the roll. Scott? Yes? Julie?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So, the applicant has asked to withdraw without prejudice and refile, and the board has accepted. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sam, Attorney Hickson, for all, for all of your, your time and attention this evening. And we look forward to seeing the project again in the near future.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
The final item on the agenda this evening is special permit 11785, which is for Lagoon Lane, which is an application for a special permit to allow for a duplex. So I don't know if we have anybody on the line here from that project, Paul? I'm not sure if you see any.
The owner, Mike Fornier is here, is the owner of the property, and we're doing the project, so Craig Cianowski, Rim Engineering.
You can't get rid of your pride, huh?
Good. I don't know how to respond to that, so.
Oh, it's good, it's good. I'm just poking fun.
That's probably the appropriate response. Okay.
So what he has is an existing house, number four Lagoon Lane, is at the corner of Lagoon Lane and Juniper Road in the Norton Grove. We need relief for several things from the zoning board of the fields, which we were at last week. There was a small hitch in that, but they signaled that they were ready to approve once we provided one other piece of information. The town shows the house being built in 1999, and it's five feet from the road, so that doesn't make a lot of sense. We need to show that it existed prior to zoning, different issue than what you need to look at. We're looking to convert a single-family house to a duplex. So that's, we need a special permit for that. We're in the R60 zone. What he would be doing is putting the first floor of the unit one, second floor of the unit two. So the only construction we're looking to do to the building itself is, in order to provide access to the second floor unit, separate from the first floor unit. At this time, there's an existing deck in the front and an existing deck in the back. The back deck is on the second floor, but does not have a staircase. So we would add a staircase to have access out of the building. And on the first floor, the deck would need to expand far enough to reach the second doorway, second accessway of unit two. We require to have a total of four parking spaces, and we have room, he has an existing paved parking area which holds three conforming parking spaces. We can add a fourth one to the side of it, walk him in off Juniper Road and add parking off of there if we needed to. So that's basically what we're looking to do.
Are there usually challenges parking at the property, does the boat ramp?
Ah, there's not.
The boat ramp's pretty much two lots beyond him, so his, his lot stops. It's all fenced in, and then the area where people use the boat ramp, the sand, you know, the parking area is literally beyond his lot.
The, the end of Juniper Road is blocked off with rocks, so the boat ramp, you actually have to go all the way around the block to get to it.
Okay. Any members of the board have questions for the applicant or the engineer Greg here?
One question, I, I believe that the whole area of this lot, town, sewage, is that correct?
I'm not sure of the whole area, but my house is, yes.
Yeah, look where the road is, yes.
Thanks.
Right, there would be no, no need for additional utilities, they're already in the building?
Again, this is an application for a special permit to allow for a duplex on the property. Any additional questions based on either the presentation this evening or the materials that we have available in regards to the project? And we do, we do have a hand raised, I'm sorry, I didn't see you on the Zoom meeting there. Ms. Arena?
Yes, hi, Pimp Arena, eight Fordham Drive. My concern is that, from all appearances, the work has already been done, including mail, an additional mailbox erected with the same address, and it just really concerns me, number one, the tightness of the park, snow removal and all of that sort of thing, and more so, just that somebody has done the work and now it's coming and applying for permission to do that.
Okay. Thank you for raising that concern, for raising your concerns. Yeah, I mean, in general, we would need to, a homeowner's allowed to do whatever work on their property they want to do in terms of actually having it as a duplex, that's where the, the question would lie here, in terms of what would be the sign-offs for the, would it be a building inspector's sign-off for the duplex in terms of having the split utilities and everything like that?
All of that, if special permits approved, the, the building commissioner would need to sign off on all the different building permits from electrical, plumbing. Fire department would get involved with any addresses, new addresses created.
Yeah, and obviously, all of those electrical and plumbing inspections are much easier to do prior and during the process of construction than they are if construction is completed, because otherwise, you have to rip up walls and try and figure out what's inside them.
Paul, does, does the fire department deal with any, like, egress issues then? Would they look at it from that point of view as well?
They can on a single-family home. They're looking, constructed frontage, things like that, so they would weigh in on that.
Okay.
Right, that's probably largely the reason why they're looking to add the stairway on that back deck as well.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Just to add that second point of egress for the second unit.
Just when Paul said, you know, like, another address number, I'm thinking, okay, how are people getting in and out in, in the case of emergency? Obviously, it doesn't sound like it's EDA, you know, access, but that's fine, that's not required necessarily, but just thinking about those things, as he's saying, you know, two, two addresses.
Any additional questions from members of the board or anybody else on the meeting? Greg, you mentioned you're going back to zoning to deal with a few issues, is there a timeline on that, where you?
The next meeting, November?
10th?
10th?
November the 10th, okay.
All they would be, all they need to vote on or approve would be, either it's a finding that the house existed non-conforming with zoning prior to 1974, when zoning came into the town, or there would be a variance because the house was built too close to the road after 1974. So, one where either they, they can't approve the finding unless we can prove the house existed prior to 1974. It appears that the second floor was an addition, and that's where 1999 came into play, but for some reason, the town doesn't show two dates, they show the earlier date, they only show the newer date.
Understood. Okay. Any additional questions for members of the board or action that they'd like to take in relation to the application?
Move to approve special permit 1175.
Are there any conditions to that approval?
Conditions on approval by zoning board?
Paul, second.
Okay. We have a motion by Alan and a second by Julie. Is there any further discussion from members of the board related to that motion? Okay. Hearing none, I will go through the roll for a vote. Wayne?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So the application is approved, again contingent on approval by zoning, however they choose to go through, go through their approval process.
Would we need to come back before you or submit their approval to Paul?
Yeah, just.
No, if, if, if it's just conditioned, subject to the approval of ZBA, no, you don't need to, you would not need to come back.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So we opened with this, we put this off at the beginning of the meeting, we touched on it a little bit earlier, so planning board business and policies, as I think everybody is aware, at this point certainly.
I blow up your spot.
This evening is Scott's last meeting with the board. So Scott will obviously miss you. I think your work with the board has been very, has been great and very helpful and additive to our processes in terms of putting structures in place that are good and reliable and helpful. So thank you.
Thank you.
And also, that also means that we're going to have to appoint a new clerk. I'm not sure, I don't think we need to do that this evening, Paul, or should we?
Well, Scott, you said tonight is your last.
That's what I put on the letter that I provided, so it probably makes sense to, I mean, you can do what you want, but you know, you know, I wanted to say thanks to everyone for, you know, putting up with me, I say, and then kind of going through all of the, the different evaluations that we've done. You know, one of the things that I, I really enjoyed was going through the, the master plan and taking part in those community working sessions that Paul organized with some of the other teams, I think were very valuable, and it was nice to see some of the town coming out to really share their input. I know that that's kind of one of the next things in motion, and I think it's a really strong vision for the town, and, you know, I hope to continue to watch and see that grow. I think there's a lot of good strategic approach to that, to things that are going on right now that are already in motion, and those that are yet to come in the next five years, potentially through the next decade. So, you know, I hope the, the rest of the Norton, you know, town members, you know, look at that and really embrace what it's doing, and that as, you know, new applicants come in to, to try and, you know, subject or submit, you know, new plans to the area that may be unique or one-offs that we haven't seen before, just, you know, look at that plan and see how it fits visionary-wise, because I think Norton has a real, real unique opportunity as it makes some changes to its infrastructure and everything else to, to really kind of set a new character for itself in the next coming decade. So I was excited to be part of that, and I look forward to where it's going, and, you know, Paul, I think you did a really nice job, and to the rest of the members in some of the working sessions that we had, some long nights, some challenging discussions on, on both sides of the table, but I think the whole, whole part of the process has been really eye-opening for me, you know? I hadn't really been exposed to it before, kind of going through the election process and joining the board, so I think for anyone out there that watches or even hears that there's a, an open position available, you know, jump in and throw your name in the ring and, and, you know, get involved, because you don't need to know everything upfront. People will help and guide you along the way, but share your voice, because it really may add a different color and a new, new tone to the town. So for anyone that's watching or sees this later or even hears through the grapevine, you know, if you're thinking about it, do it, don't wait. But, you know, to the members that I've known longer and shorter, it's, it's been a pleasure, and thanks for the time.
Thank you very much, Scott. So in terms of the position of clerk for the planning board is vacant at the end of the meeting. So Paul, your position is that we should look to appoint someone this evening?
Because we have two decisions. Certainly, one, I need to confirm the withdrawal typically in ZBA, when they withdraw, we issue a decision, so I'm confirming that with Amy, but this last case, we'd like to, we need the.
Both of them actually, 186 and.
Oh, 186 as well, too, right, yeah, so possibly three coming out tonight.
Okay, so we won't, we, we should, we should probably act to appoint a clerk in relatively short order. Hope you don't object, Scott.
I'm staying. I'm safe.
Do we have anyone on the board at this time who is interested in being the clerk at
I can't do it, guys, I'm already vice chair, somebody else is going to step up.
Okay.
It's not a huge time commitment, just sign the, yeah, I think, you know, I guess they've.
Alan said yes, Alan said yes.
I was going to throw a pitch out there.
Okay.
I was going to throw a pitch out there.
It'll make you stop talking, I'll say.
All right, there you go.
Okay, so do we have an official nomination that Alan, you'd like to nominate yourself?
Sure.
Okay.
I'll second Alan's nomination of himself.
Thank you, Julie, for the second. Are there any other nominations? Okay.
It's not that bad.
Hearing none, I'll go through the members for a vote on the nomination of Alan as clerk. Wayne?
Yes.
Scott?
A colleague's name.
Julie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Alan, thank you. Paul, I'm sure.
Paul is breathing a sigh of relief right now.
Paul, I'm sure we'll guide you in whatever actions are needed on decisions that we have coming through.
And the tracking chart.
And when we, and obviously.
It was part of the motion, it was just signing.
I'll help him, I'll help him with the tracking chart, I'll, I'll help with the tracking chart.
How we work out responsibilities is, we can work that out, yes. And obviously, when we have a new member come on board, we'll have a new constitution of the board, and we can address that at a later point, should we choose to do so. So, Paul, do we have anything else in terms of planning board business and policies that we wanted to discuss this evening?
Yeah, so with Scott's resignation, the clerk will issue a letter to the select board, who will then put out the notice for interested persons. They, I talked to the town manager about this, they will definitely want the board to weigh in on it, on recommendations, and in fact, it'll probably result in a joint meeting with the select board on the appointment of the replacement. So, if you do have people you have in mind, go ahead and have them write a letter of interest to the select board.
So, whoever gets appointed would just take over the rest of his term, and then would have to.
Yes, and it would, it would, the rest of Scott's term, which I can't recall, I think you're 2022, I think?
Spring of '22.
Yeah.
It's a trial basis.
It would go until the next election cycle, anyway, either way?
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Yeah, so they should, so anybody interested should write a letter to the select board, the town manager, or?
If you write to the select board, it's, it's more appropriate to write to the select board, but it'll, that will go to the town manager.
Anything else, Paul?
That is it.
Are there any motions? Scott, would you like to make a motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Thank you. Scott for the motion and Wayne for the second. Is there any further discussion? Other than go Red Sox, okay. Wayne?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good night, and look forward to seeing you at our next meeting and at town meeting on the 25th.